Good evening, it's April 28th. We call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting order of the Dayton Board of Selectmen. Can you go? Oh, President.
President, please.
To the flag of the United States, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible.
One negative to start right off. I don't have my cheat sheet for the department numbers tonight, so we're just gonna have to bounce around.
I have.
This is kind of the same as the school.
I did forget to give her credit last night.
Thank you.
So we'll start off with library, which is 610. Wouldn't mind for the speaker to come up here.
Ed, how are you?
Where are we?
We took the approach of, well, the only increases are really level contractual increases that are observed amongst all the departments. We have the expectation of a retirement, which has been included. And that's a one-time line item. It also, I have confirmed that it doesn't affect all the budget lines that we would have to adjust for the purposes of keeping our accreditation for library services. So...
The buyback doesn't affect?
No, no, it doesn't affect the bottom line. And then, since we were given the direction to be as level funded as we could, the expenses, I, the same approach I did last year is I made sure that we were meeting our materials requirement. And I took from place to place other budget lines to try to maintain the bottom line while still meeting all that we needed to, so.
We've got a couple of new members. Can you just explain that to them?
So in order for Massachusetts libraries to be able to borrow with other libraries, which is crucial for Dayton, since we only have so much room to store a very finite amount of collections, we need to maintain certain standards, I guess, is the way to do it. So one of them is that we have to be open so many hours a week for a town our size. We have a percentage that need, it's based on our budget. Ours is 19%, and that's based on the community size. And 19% of the budget has to be spent in order to maintain our criteria.
Excuse me, is that 19% to maintain your, the amount of books you have, or?
No, no, we have to spend 19% of our budget for library materials. And that can be remote access materials, it can be books.
Journals, anything, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We also have to, there's a formula that the municipality has to fund every year. So every, it's very convoluted, but it's average of the last three years municipal requirement times like 2.5%, which we usually meet through our contract increases, things like that. Those are the highlights of the financial things that we need to maintain. But if you have questions, please.
Looking at the expense column, every, all the expenses, with the exception of books, 5510, books and magazines is down. Books and magazines is increased to hit that level.
Yeah. And that, I believe that percentage is at 18%. The extra 1% we can use with Friends funding for museum passes, we have to use that. That usually gets us a little high in them.
A silly question.
Yeah.
Page.
Yep.
That's...
That's our part-time person that we did. Because of our staffing challenges, we asked for a few more hours a week on average to just help us.
Do you know how many hours you're looking for?
It's 15.
15?
On average.
From 12.
From 12?
Right.
And you guys just recommending 12?
No, no, currently we're at 12. And we're, the page hour is up to 15 hours a week. So with the youth, with the youth library in the lower level town hall, like in the adult portion in the modular now, the staffing challenges have been exacerbated, which is why we have needed, like why the library has needed increased page hours to be able, you know, to basically bridge the gap there.
The department request though is more than what the board...
That was, I was also hoping for, was it 10 hours a month? Or, I don't remember, I think it was 10 hours a month for substitute librarian position, just in case we have something horrible happen and, or we're not reachable, there's a backup. But, you know, I understand the position the town is in, so.
Okay, that's what the difference is.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. When do you expect the retirement?
I think it'll be the end of next fiscal year.
Okay, so full by June? You're at the current?
Yeah, yeah.
23.
June 23, yeah.
Okay.
Hard to think that far out. I know. Yeah.
I think most people, by the time they've decided, waiting that long.
Yeah, yeah.
Questions?
Nope.
Jessel.
All right, thank you.
175.
Time, and I'm not here representing planning, but I have one question. Kerry speaking for planning and zoning, she's got the next two items.
Okay. Is the Bristol Aggie, are they doing anything, or is this basically our Bristol Aggie?
They, so, business manager of Frosting said he was going to rise the volume, but they don't guarantee. But I can explain the budget if you want to dive into it in the next sitting. I watch whatever the world, the board is.
Let me see, I think I just saw it walk by the window.
And we don't want to make Kerry wait.
I think I saw it walk past the window. You have to click.
Thank you.
We're on planning board first, and we're just taking a look.
Okay.
It's pretty standard.
Professional and technical, I'm assuming you guys are expecting?
Yes. Yeah, we have, currently we have two appeals that were filed on our decisions that were made. So, legal fees.
Surfed assessment, I don't know if everybody saw the note that that was assessed. So that increases is the assessment.
So they did a 2020 census, and because of the 2020 census, that increased it significantly. And so that's why there was a huge jump. So, thank you, Census 2020.
One thing I'll mention before, before we open the questions, just in general, so it's not just a planning board thing, but the, you guys have seen, the stipends have been frozen for the last however many years, so we'll... Some people are looking for changes in that, but we'll make our recommendation on that as we go.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else have any questions for planning board?
No.
I don't.
Okay, do you want to jump onto zoning board?
Sure. I think that one's pretty standard as well.
76. Same thing on professional and technical, you expect?
So the professional and technical, they, I didn't do any, forgive me, the board did not do any adjustment on that. They used legal counsel to write their findings and decisions on all their matters. We don't know how many cases come in. We had a significant drop in our cases this past year, COVID. People weren't building because, or doing anything because COVID. We kept at the same level funded. We are seeing some, well, we're hearing people are coming in with some applications. We did have a couple come in, that are coming in. Also, we have some 40Bs, some revamping and whatnot. And we do have one 40B application that's currently under an appeal as well. So it's at stage one with, it's in a butter appeal. Where that goes after that, we don't know yet. So we're being, just level funding.
Anybody else have any questions on?
No, I was just looking at the expenditures for the past couple of years. It was like 48 and 58, so, you know, we'll see how the budget works out, I guess, at this point.
Yeah. You know, I guess the only other question I'd have, and probably more of a planning, you guys would probably be the first, first ones to see growth.
Yeah.
So would you have any indication as to what, what you're seeing for growth next year? And then in the next year, the town, from a building standpoint?
From a building standpoint, well, we have quite a few subdivisions, as you probably know, Forest Hills. Who knows where that's gonna go? But they are proposing 135 units. That's pretty significant. But that's gonna take quite a while before we even come to a decision on that. We do have, you know, ins and outs of 40, four mazes. The water moratorium kind of, I don't want to say puts a stop to it, but it slows it down a little bit. But we still see those four mazes come in. We also have a couple, I've had quite a few phone calls of developers seeing huge parcels of properties and asking, oh, how do we go about doing the subdivisions? So the drive is out there. And even, and my first thing is, gotta go to water, water district because of the water moratorium, conservation, because those are your biggest hurdles. So it's hard to predict. I think Forest Hills is the biggest one right now because of that, the size of that, that development. And then, you know, you have some of those large pieces of property that they're looking to do some work on.
Forest Hills would be in the North Dayton.
Yes.
So that wouldn't, they don't have a moratorium, right?
They do not, because they're in the North Dayton Fire District area. So we're still working, I mean, that's really in the preliminary stage too. So they're still working on that, and that's still very, again, very, very preliminary. I think we're quite a ways out before we even come to determination. So, but, you know, just to take it under your wing, they're proposing the 135 units. So just putting that out there, that's the proposal.
Have any of the developers mentioned of any over 55 communities? And the reason I ask is that an over 55 community typically doesn't put much strain on our school systems.
So Forest Hills, part of that will include, yeah, I want to say 35 units. I think it's 35 units. I think it's 35 units are gonna be 55 plus, they're proposing. Other developers, no. I haven't heard anything about any more 55 plus. We do have Hunter's Hill, that also is a 55 plus community. And I know they're in the process of, they have a new buyer, so they can finish the project. No word about asking for the relief on that, so that's a good thing. And they are in the process of doing some reconfiguring on that. And again, that's still in preliminary stage as well. So it's good that they're keeping it at the 55. But as far as any of these new developments coming in, no. It's, they're looking for your standard single-family homes. Yeah. I know.
Yeah. Can I just ask a quick question? What does the criteria meet for like a single-family home in terms of strain on the school system? Do they anticipate like two kids per household, or? I mean, I'm just...
Legal term, they say like two and a half kids. How they come up with a two and, yeah, it's a crazy weird number. How you can justify a 2.4 child is beyond me. But, you know, a three-bedroom home.
Okay, yeah.
So if you figure a three-bedroom home, you know, sometimes you can fit two kids in that house or a bedroom.
Okay.
So maybe that's how they come up with a 2.4 child. I don't know. But, yeah, so typically, you know, a three-bedroom home, you're at least gonna have two children, give or take.
Okay.
So, yeah. Hard, I know.
I think that my wife would say that I count sometimes as 0.4 of a child.
No comment.
No other questions? Thank you, Kerry.
Okay.
Moving a little faster.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine as well. In the front, the Aggie school.
Um, so the Aggie, this is the second year we've seen the impact on the, uh, the school building project, with the degree, um, the education budget, and budget 300. And so what we, we actually had an increase in FY, in actually, in actually this school year, which as you know, the October 1 enrollment informs the following year's assessment. So we had an increase of four students at the Aggie. It went from 12 to 16 students. This, this year, actually this month, the Bristol Aggie budget was actually approved by the trustees and the commissioners with an increase to the tuition of $400 per student. So that, so the in, so the in-county tuition per student increased, or will be increasing, from 2817 per student to 3217 per student. Then the debt, the debt service structure, our share of the debt service structure for the project is, gives $5,498 per student. So when we add the, when we add the $5,498 multiplied by that times 16, that comes up to $86,415. And then you add the 3217, multiply that times 16, and add the $51,472 to that, it come up with a total of $137,887. One of the things, one of the things as we know, in that the, in that the structure of the debt, like the impact, and the impact on our assessment, if I project it on, is I get, I'm just the enrollment of the school with full build-out will increase from now to FY '26, to a, to a high number of 640 students.
The number again, please, sir.
Uh, 640 students is the, is the full enrollment based on the build-out. So, um, so that, so, so if, so if the enrollment is spread out, oh, you know, when the enrollment is spread out, oh, and the enrollment is spread out amongst all the Bristol, because the enrollment is, the enrollment increases spread out between all the Bristol County communities and beyond. But we, like we, like we actually have the ability, that the, uh, 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 that the per, uh, 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 that the per student share of that, that will actually decrease because it will be spread out. The only, uh, 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 the only issue we need to watch in Dayton is because the school is in our backyard, like we, like we might actually, oh, yeah, like it actually might have the opposite effect here in Dayton. So, uh, so the Aggie has a model. Because we're here in Dayton, and the Aggie is here in Dayton, that model might not, oh, yeah, like, actually come to fruition for us. But that, but the debt, but the debt service of that project and the debt assessment, you know, it has a portion of our operating budget going into FY '23. That is a cost of, oh, $86,000.
No, historically, how much, how many, at a high number, we've had at Bristol Aggie?
I would say we're at our highest.
16-ish?
About now.
Okay.
And even more at the...
BP, yeah.
Yeah.
$3,200 a student, though.
No, I mean, I have to, I have to say, when I heard that the county was, was planning on an increase of, back in February, between 200 and 400, and they said, okay, I'll, I'll go project and plan on the middle number. And so we tried to go up to 400.
Increase number of students, do we need increased fire or anything like that?
No, 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 the building project anticipated the whole build-out in a fire, police building, and highway were fully involved in that project as a wing.
We don't need any additional people, though, because of more students?
For?
Like for firefighters, for EMS, or anything like that?
No, 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 like, uh, no, like everyone is pretty comfortable where we are. Oh, you know, and that, oh, like in that project not being a driver for any increased services.
Questions on Aggie? Questions on Aggie over here?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
One question. Is there, there must be a limit per community on how many students you can send? Is it based on population or not? I know there's an exam that they have to take.
So to my knowledge, there isn't a limit, it's based on the application and the admissions process. But to my knowledge, there's no high and fast, there's no ceiling that it can...
No ratios per community to the total, and?
No, not that I've ever heard of, the, the schools, and I do have some, I do have some background in that, and I've never heard of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're saying BP doesn't have anything like that, right? Because our numbers there have gone up, skyrocketed, really.
No kidding?
He actually said it the other day. They just put everything into the pool and don't base it on the...
Communities is just cream of the crop.
Yep.
Just working the calculator, so I'm giving them a minute.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Before adding up, I had to multiply.
So you don't mind? So you don't mind if we go early?
Definitely not.
Mike, you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium? Work is one sixty one. This is your first go around with the budget, right?
This is the first one I prepared. I, I was here last year, but I didn't prepare it last year, so.
Remind me what's in, what the increase in, uh, professional and technical?
Um, professional and technical is, um, so I said for education, so from time to time, going to town council as well. Um, and hopefully going to some more town clerks' conferences and classes.
Assistant and the clerk, is it um, fifty one fifteen, is that a, is that a?
We have a ten hour a week clerk as well.
Okay.
And that's shared with the treasure collector. He has some of the other twenty five, her the other twenty five hours.
Okay. Is that split working?
Um, good, yeah, we, he used to be scattered throughout the day, now we just have her on Wednesdays and that works out well, it's more defined.
Fifty one oh five and fifty one fifteen, I'm assuming those are contractual increases?
Yes.
Then fifty one oh one, we, we had the letter in the packet.
Yes, in the packet, that is what.
Questions on, no?
I just got one question. Some of the cl, the town clerk budget, but you're shooting for an increase of like fourteen more percent. Did you, was it not a full year last year, or?
Um, I'm sorry, for?
I'm looking at five one oh one.
Oh, for the increase?
Yeah.
Um, so I didn't really negotiate my salary when I started, I just accepted.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um.
Okay.
It's more comparable to other towns and also, um, other departments.
Okay. I mean, I know, Mike, your numbers, the TA numbers based on the salary study that you had done?
So, yes, and then we brought, uh, then we brought forward to, um, to the selectmen and we had a, uh, and we had a, uh, a conversation in the seventy five thousand.
Have you changed your recommendation?
Uh, no, like, I typically don't once I make it, but that doesn't really mean anything. I mean, once really the, uh, once really the, like, selection vote, that's the, oh, you know, that is, oh, you know, that is the position that I upput against.
Okay.
Ooh, um, question on fifty four twenty and five eighty. And also with regards to the warrant article that was voted down at the last special, is that included in here anywhere?
No, so I, I was very clear on that, I did not ask for dog licensing software. That's the actual cost for the paper, we have carbon paper that's very expensive, and the dog license, licenses themselves. Um, that's should be the only two costs in there, so it's just the printer cost and the dog license cost.
So we're looking at a fourteen hundred dollar increase between those two line items. And the dog soft licensing software. Do, would, would that, would we recoup? If we saw this increase for the next three years?
It would eventually pay for itself, just because you wouldn't have to pay for that very, that carbon paper is very expensive.
And my other questions then would be, um, how much time is the town clerk's office spending? Um. Chasing down licensing and or, um. See, the other, the other piece to that would be, um. Automating renewals so that we don't miss that additional revenue.
There's benefits to the, to the software, so yeah. Um, the software, you can collect emails, so right now, we send a reminder letter out to, to residents, and that's all done by hand in the office. So it's kind of antiquated, it takes a long time. Uh, so I think that kind of answers that question as far as chasing people goes. Um, but the system will allow us to basically send out reminder emails and instead of costing the taxpayer money, it's sending out letters. Right now, we, we're just sending out letters this year and doing it all by hand. And we do, we do the dog licenses completely, everything's by hand.
Oh, and will, will this dog licensing software integrate with your census? Um, software that, I'm assuming you're using software for the census, once it gets submitted to you, it's getting entered somewhere?
It doesn't integrate, so it, the state is completely on their own server, even town hall, it's, it's not even connected to our internet. So the state is completely separate, so they can't, they're not allowed to talk to each other at all.
So, but if people. Can you pull a report down from the census side?
We can.
That basically says, hey, Robert Rinden, you've registered for, on your census, you've indicated you have two dogs, you haven't been in, in, by April, whatever the date is, first, thirtieth, whatever the date is. Um, do you still have these two dogs? You know, we could be, will this, can we set up the software to, to, um, take advantage of that? So that again, we're, I, I know it's a nominal fee.
Mm-hmm.
But, and, so those fees have been the same fees for the last twenty plus years, I believe.
Actually, I changed it for the first time. Last special town meeting, we, we had a fifteen dollar late fee, we reduced the, the highest late fee can pay now is ten dollars. So we reduced it a little bit, and we only have one late fee now. We had two, we had a five and a ten, a five and a fifteen, now there's only one ten dollar late fee. It's just too confusing for residents.
And I'm, I'm, I'm fine on the, the late fee part of it, I'm just talking about the regular fee.
The regular fee hasn't changed.
In probably since I've moved to town twenty plus years ago.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So.
We just want you to license your dog, that's, that's why we kept it the same.
I guess I would ask, how many do, how many dogs are licensed in the town?
So we're at about eight hundred right now. Last year, we licensed, I think we had thirteen hundred, if not, we were really close to thirteen hundred. I think we could.
Dogs died.
No. Once we do that late letter, we'll get all the lates.
I got.
And, you know, so some resident, you just get them, they respond to the late letter.
Yeah, so my point here is that we're talking about five thousand dollars for software, we're, we're increasing our office supplies by fourteen hundred dollars. Thus, this year alone, let alone what next year's increase is and the year after, let alone what we're paying you and your staff. To stuff envelopes.
Right.
I mean.
I wanna, I was hoping to, to look into that again next year, I was just a little turned off to, to even look at it this year. And it does, it takes a lot longer at the counter, because you have to, you fill out your whole dog license, you know, packet, you come to the counter. And now I, I fill it out in front of you on a whole different form, just to have one of my assistants put it into the computer. So it's three times for that same, same information that's just re-recorded. And each time you record something, there's a chance for a mistake. But I, I was hoping to look into that next year, even though it does cost more, I was just turned off at the last, if people want to wait longer, that was just my, my thought on it.
Would pay for it soon.
It, it wouldn't.
Eventually.
I, I, I'd have to, I have the numbers in my office, I don't have in front of me, just because I wasn't gonna look into it for this year. Um, this, I think it's five hundred dollars a year is the, is the fee. Um, it might be three hundred, so yeah, that's why I don't have it in front of me. There's a yearly service charge, you know, because you have technical support and all that, but you're not paying for the expensive paper, so. You're not paying, you know, like, like you said, there's a lot of benefits, but I was hoping not to do it this year.
Is it three or five?
That's the question, I don't have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't prepared to ask for it.
Oh, it's, it was, no, so, so the one time cost.
One time.
Was five, I believe, is what I saw on the special, because I went back to the last special.
Okay.
Then the, then the annual support fee is either three hundred or five hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
So, which is, compared to other software that we're paying annual support fees is a nominal amount.
As long as it pays for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's not an article now anyways.
Right, right, I, I mean, it's just something that.
Something to consider.
That to me, I, I mean, I, I'm in the IT field, so I know, this is.
Yeah.
You know, we have a chance to automate something and, you know, so every single piece of paper, at some point, what are we doing with it? It's public record, so at some point, do we have to convert that to digital? Are we paying for paper storage somewhere, you know, so it's, you know, it's.
Yes, I, I like it, thank you.
I think Lenny has a question.
Like, one of the things that. Discussion that I'm not hearing tonight, is that the Board of Health is currently putting together a cattle bylaw. And this software is going to help. For accurate records as far who has dogs, how they own. But taking it one step further, the Board of Health. Is going to be enforcing this bylaw. The more accurate the records are, the more likely we. Assistant enforcement. We talked about this last year in regards to the, his request for software to help keep track of dogs, and it was shut down. To that bylaw, action of bylaw, that software is. Not only in accountability, but also in directing.
The bylaw you're talking about is the number of dogs that to be considered a cannibalist?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we also have the commercial cannibals.
Yeah.
And we have the smaller, I'm not sure what number they agree. Result in a cattle license. Six, but then the commercials is much larger. Because if you accuse someone of that, you've got a liability issue. The more accurate your data, the more less.
At least in special, it was three thousand.
It was, yeah.
Three thousand.
Incorrected.
Awesome, great, even, even less.
Yeah, so we, we could put that much faster.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions for the clerk?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Um, we will go to town meeting?
Yeah, here's one of those.
I know this is level funded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I noticed, in, in, I'm gonna kind of talk a little bit about elections as well. Right, notice with elections, we have an increase in salaries there. Um, but we don't have an increase for the salary, uh, for the checkers here. With the split to three precincts at town meeting versus at election, are you basically telling us that we don't need any more checkers at town meeting?
Yeah, uh, you don't, you don't need, I think we, we are running it pretty efficiently, and, uh, I mean, I, I don't know how many specials we'll have. Oh, we didn't, we haven't used all the money in, in years past, I think we can run it as it is right now. Yeah, yep.
And this is, is this based, you know, like you mentioned, you don't know how many specials we're gonna have, is this, are these numbers based off of? The one annual and one special, or one annual, two specials, what are the numbers, do you know?
I didn't get too technical with this one, I got really technical with elections this one, I kind of just looked at prior years.
Okay.
Yeah, so whatever, yeah, I really just kept it level funded and, and saw that we didn't spend it in, in prior year. And knowing that the, um, the minimum wage has gone up, but I don't, we don't require any more election workers for the town meeting, so.
Okay.
I think we'll be okay. Which is good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions on, um, town meeting?
No.
No.
Elections. Twenty two, the, did we only have the one? One election in twenty, in the current year?
FY twenty two was one election, yep. And this, this one, we have three factored in. And with two changes to minimum wage in, in this timeframe. And they look pretty comparable to FY twenty one, the numbers. Although I did, somewhere, I did, there's a breakdown where I went right to the person and how many hours and the, and the minimum wage. So that, I did get very technical and broke it down by the hour. Pretty confident on at least the payroll numbers.
Date elections this year, right?
Yes, September and November.
Questions on? Questions? Sixty three?
The only increase is postage, and postage has gone up, and we're running it really tight this year. We, we send a lot of mail, every, every single day is a continuous process, not to mention, you know, vote by mail and. But just keeping up with voter registration every day, so.
Yeah, silly question, but, um, back to the. More efficient in using I, I T, I'm assuming we probably, we still have to do mail, we can't. Do electronic as a, as an opt out, or?
For, uh, so, yeah, by law, there's, like, I just, confirmation mailing, so that, we just spent, that's about fourteen hundred dollars in postage. And by law, we're required to not only send people who haven't answered the census a postcard. If, if you don't answer the census, right, that goes to the whole family, only one person signs. If you don't answer it for your family, then we send every person in the house a postcard, and we have to pay for your postage back. So not only do we send you a postcard, we have to put a stamp on it, fee to send it back. So we sent that to twenty five hundred people in town, you know, and that gets the, the postcard plus the stamp, so that's by law. You can't not send a postcard without the return postage. So this, the dog licensing, I'm, I don't even have to send a, a reminder letter, you know? Um, but stuff like voter registration, yeah, it's, you have to send, I know this is by mail.
Questions on.
I was going to say, for all the mailings you seem to have to do, $1,000 really doesn't seem to be all that much.
Right. We'll have an increase just with the two elections and just the additional mail that goes with that absentee voting and.
But do you think you'll be looking for more at the special?
Unfortunately, this is my first go-around doing a state election, never mind, you know, three in a year. So I, I did it to, looking back to the best of my abilities. I'm really hoping that we'll run it nice and lean and tight. And I'm hoping I don't have to go back. Yep. I, I think it's pretty comparable to last, you know, in, um, what was it, FY21? I think it's pretty comparable. The last time we had three elections. There are some numbers that are actually lower, but I'm hoping it works.
Okay. Questions on rich.
Awesome. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Well, I hope you don't mind going a little early, too.
Okay.
He's usually upset about going early.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Very much.
We are starting on 1:45.
Yes. So I'm going to dive in if there are any, if there's any information for, for anyone who doesn't know. I was sworn into office on the 11th of this month. If there's any information that I'm unable to fully provide, I will be in touch with the FinCom at the earliest opportunity after I collect the information. If that's okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And this is my first go-round. If you please just, you know, let me know where you'd like to dive in and.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're, I'm under the assumption that the majority of your budget was done by Mary, so you're, you're kind of.
Yes. The entirety of this budget was done by Mary.
How bad and clean up, basically.
Yes. Yes. On the first, on the, for the treasurer. On the personnel expenses, our, um, we have some contractual raises that are part of the, um, the union agreement for the assistant treasurer and the senior clerk, which are represented by the 2.03 and the 1.16% increase. I have a recommended salary at 38,000 is the departmental request for the treasurer, which represents an 11.16% decrease from where the prior treasurer, Mary, was at. I do want to draw your attention to, oh, are there any specific questions about the personnel expenses? Okay, perfect. One thing I would like to draw your attention to is the 26.6% $4,000 increase to land 5,300 under professional and technical. I would like to explain a little bit around that. So that increase in the funding does include assistance for transitional onboarding for myself, which does include funding to bring on a temporary consultant on an as-needed temporary basis to assist in closing out the fiscal year, as well as provide any supplemental training or best practices for new treasurer collectors, in addition to what I anticipate doing with retired treasurer collector, Mary. Once she returns, she's going to do some training as well. But that increase does represent some funding to bring on a consultant to assist with some transitional, uh, some transitional assistance. There is some new office furniture planned, which includes desks, which are sorely needed by the, for the staff that are in there now. And. Otherwise, we were looking at basically level funding across the board in the other, the other non-personnel items.
In the, um, in the treasurer's department, 5301, what, what is that? Certification of legal fees.
That, to be honest, I'm going to have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
Make some quick notes, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Was less than half.
Yeah. And it's probably a better question for Janelle, but.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea, Janelle, of professional and technical? Do, is there typically a lot of money spent in that last, in the last quarter of the year?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, this will be my first end of year, honestly.
Additionally, I believe that that does include in, uh, please, uh, town administrator, my clerk, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that also includes the funding for the annual school.
Yes.
Um, which I'm not sure frankly whether Mary attended this year.
She did.
Okay, excellent.
When in August?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Excellent, perfect. That is included in there as well, which is the, um, the treasurer collector school, which is offered through the Math CTA.
So there wouldn't be any classes this last quarter?
No, no, there wouldn't. But, you know, you can see in the, you know, going back to FY20, the professional and technical has really, uh, you know, I mean, it's actually succeeded funding some years, but then up and under another, so.
Yep.
I mean, I actually think where we're at, uh, you know, I mean, short of, uh, you know, obviously less the one-time training, uh, like in the onboarding and the closeout, uh, you know, I mean, there's a good place, but, um. Uh, so, so a question with a new treasurer. Uh, you know, I mean, if there's any, if there is any assistance, only consulting, anything else, we want to be able to help onboard him.
Absolutely.
You know, do what we, uh, you know, as part of what he does and.
Yep. Yeah, whatever, um, obviously you've, you've got a very important position, so. Certainly want you to be in the best position to succeed.
Thank you very much. Big, big shoes to fill and I'm going to do my best.
That too, yeah. We did tell Mary she couldn't retire and she didn't listen, so.
Were there any other questions on the treasurer portion? Yes. So as I move on to collector, um, you will note that majority of the collector is fundamentally similar to the treasurer as the treasurer collector is split into two offices. We have under the, the payroll expenses, we have the other half for the assistant treasurer collector is represented. We also have the assistant treasurer, excuse me, the senior clerk, the other portion of their salary. Some of it is housed under the treasurer, some is housed under the collector. We do have some, um, some, again, some contractual union raises, which are represented there. And obviously the sick time buyback, of course, is, is removed from there as well. Are there any, any questions that I can answer regarding the personnel expenses?
The collector certification, is that, was that just something that was split out now?
That was, that's the MCCT and MCCA certifications, I believe is what Mary had told me, that there was a, that there was.
Yes, and she got a.
A payment for.
Yeah, I don't want to say swipe in, that's a bad word right now. Well.
Yeah, professional, technical, the same, that would, for a consultant.
Yes. And again, that is, that is the increase there, is that a portion of that is housed under the professional and technical, as we said.
The tax bills, is that software-related, paper-related?
Uh, postage increase related.
Okay.
Yep. So based on the amount of mail, um, not, not, not as much as the town clerk's office, but we do send out a substantial amount of mail and that, that reflects the increase as well.
I would, um, I'm going to kind of follow Dave's line of questioning here because you're in 91% of your budget as, as of the end of March for that line item already. Is $1,000 going to be enough?
Yeah. The bills for the rest of this year would all be out.
Yeah.
Yeah, one more.
No, because May would be out in January.
Right. So, um, so again, being new to the position, that's something that I will, um, I will confer with Mary about upon her return. She's going to begin some training and, um, I. Hopeful, given that the majority of the mail is, is out for the remainder of this fiscal year, that hopefully we should, with that increase, be able to, um, again, just keep it lean and, and hopefully not have to come back. And, um, yes.
Really two mailings, right, July and January?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Excess.
Excess, yes.
Do you have the capability to pay your real estate taxes online through the website at all?
No.
Is she yet, no?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, you can.
Yeah, I remember that.
I've never tried, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Um, were there any additional questions on the collector portion?
Your company does it for me.
Oh, there you go. Other questions on collector? No. Title?
All righty. So tax title is just the single line item of $10,000 and that $10,000 are for fees related to tax title foreclosure, such as attorney or auctioneer fees. It's difficult to know with tax title what exactly will proceed to foreclosure. So it is one of those, um, I think that that is a healthy budget that I wouldn't want to be in a, um, in a position where we do, if we do end up moving towards foreclosure, I would want to make sure that we've got sufficient funds for, for the expenses that are around that. And there hasn't been as much utilization in recent years of these funds. But, um, but I do think that, that, that represents a safe and responsible figure.
Although the question we always have for Mary on, on this is how, how are collections? Where are you seeing any trend where people are falling behind? And this, obviously, just to give you an idea.
Yeah.
Where, where next year we'll be asking and looking for some input from you.
Absolutely. I'm just going to note the collection changes.
Yeah, if we're, if we're starting to see, see people slide.
Trends.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And, you know, typically then the next question would be, all right, well, how long are we allowing before we start moving forward and, and using some of that $10,000?
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, that would have been mine.
Maturating debt, but not going to be much to talk about in a minute. 10.
Yes. So the maturing principle on long-term debt, um, this is the maturing principle on our long-term debt. The payment toward the police station in FY23 is going to be $367,000, uh, $367,925. And the above referenced line, uh, number on 52, 5906, the above referenced figure of $235,000 represents a principal reduction that will occur as a result of this payment.
I have a question for you. How many years are we in on the?
Oh, I think this will be the fifth. Yeah, let me, the number is like, yeah, the one second there when we.
And I apologize, I don't have the schedule at my office, but I didn't bring it with me.
How many years was it?
Twenty years. I don't know, it's 20, I think 20.
Commercial mortgages typically are 20.
Then, um, we started paying on that in 19. One, two, three.
Yeah. Just one of the discussions I had with Mallory back in 19 was that we could not refinance it or anything until seven years in and.
Yeah, we actually checked, I checked with Mary, um, actually when the rates were extremely low.
Yeah.
Over the fall, uh, we had to help her, and wanted to definitely try to jump on it. She reached out to Unibank and into advisor and they confirmed the same thing. But we did try. Would have been very feeling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Feeling in two years, that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They already discussed?
Yes, so.
Payment, no.
Interest, uh, the interest on the long-term debts, um, this one is fairly self-explanatory. As I referenced earlier, there were, the total payment for FY23 is going to be $367,925, of which $132,925 represents the interest portion, which is just following the debt schedule. Yes, embracing myself.
Zero. Like zero. I'm going to assume no one has questions on that. Retirement and pension.
Yes. So the contribution of $897,957 represents a 0.85% increase, which is set along the full funding schedule and assessment, which is set by Bristol County Retirement.
Already received a retirement asset.
Oh, yeah, I'll let you make.
Yep. Questions?
No.
Okay. Our workers' comp?
All right. So we move on to workers' comp. Our workers' comp is administered through MEGA, the Mass Education and Government Association. They handle our workers' comp and this 1.11% increase to $57,000 is a result of our current payroll and the classification of our employees. Employees have a risk projection classification based on their, their job classification, based on what they do. And the, um, the workers' compensation is based on our total payroll amount and the risk classification of the individual employees, which comes out to the $57,000.
And that we've already seen that for next year.
Yeah, yeah, that is one of the things that throw our chance at it being put up to bid. So by next week, we might have the ability to decrease that, you know?
Okay.
Well, if anybody got reclassified in some fashion?
Um, I'm, I'm not aware, um, offhand, but I'll make notes.
No.
We had some additions. We had a couple.
Yeah, yeah, but in terms of the employee thing, we pass no, and actually our experience, right? Uh, for workers' comp is extremely, it's, it's, it's extremely good.
I thought it was really.
Damn, you say that.
Uh, yeah.
This is one that we could, we'll have a call next week.
Yeah, an updated call, yeah. Updated number, yeah.
Group health.
Yes. Departmental request for FY23 is $1,312,436.25, which represents a 7.95% increase. This 7.95% increase is driven by a 1% premium increase in addition to the addition of new plans. Beyond that, there's also a buffer built in to absorb life events. We didn't want to budget simply for the known insurance needs as we've got some known unknowns, such as possible births, marriages, new hires or other circumstances that could represent qualifying life events, which would, could cause an employee or their family member to become benefit-eligible outside of the typical open enrollment period. And so there's a buffer built in to absorb any potential unforeseen life events as well.
Was it 21 that we had the? We made and holiday.
That was very helpful.
20 would have been the last year, really on the old plan.
Honestly, I'm not sure that was pre-me.
Yeah. As far as the plan goes, assuming 20 was the last year that we were on the old plan, so we're up almost closing in on 50% from, from back then. Is this something we've?
It comes with the old plan and so.
It's in 20 at 960. Assuming that was a full year.
So. My knowledge, I'm a member of the southeastern regional journalist group for, um, a few years now. And just at my knowledge, I think we made. just at my knowledge, I don't think we may have made any changes in plan design or plans in the last few years, but I can go back and double check. We've had the bargain with our unions in order to do that as well, and that is, and oh, you know, in the last, and just over last year, you know, I would have heard about that in the bargaining that we've had, and it's, I haven't heard anything, so I'm not really sure if there was any real changes to the, oh, yeah, to the plan designs and, I mean, because I would have inevitably heard about it.
I think it's been about five or six years before, you know, since we've changed anything like that. That was quite a while ago, I think.
You selectmen at that point?
No, that's the last time I can remember anything coming up about that. Maybe deductibles, maybe plan deductibles or something, I don't know.
Most of the, most of the contracts are barely, either you're still negotiating or in the first year, we're not closing in really on anybody.
Open on, but.
Where you're going to be starting to open negotiate.
So there are, there are. Contracts open right now, but the, but in terms of health insurance also, we bargain health insurance with our unions at once. So, yeah, I mean, we do, based on the expense here, it has, you know, I mean, it has become a regular best practice for cities and towns, like on a, oh, you know, on a periodic basis to actually bring someone in to take a look and to pour their experience rates into, to frankly see, oh, you know, even with the same, even with the same plan design, oh, you know, what, oh, how, how their experience rates are actually stacking up to the experience rates that that the group premium is based upon as well. And I think I tell see to do that, so I mean, that would be like, that would be something in the future I would like to do, I just relate to see where we are, where the health group that we're in now, but yeah, I mean. We have been a member of the Southeastern, the Southeastern Mass Health Group, and they are pretty, they are a pretty good group. But I mean, as I mentioned, I think working, taking a deep dive is is a healthy thing to do.
What's the other thing is how many people, like each year have been on the program? Because, you know, we've had increase on police officers, there's quite a few people that would fall under this, it would almost be helpful, you know, each year when we see that number to know, okay, there was 100 people on at this time, now there's 125, that could explain some of the increase, not even, so there's, there's a lot of other factors too, we have to look at, we can't just look at a pure number.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's over four years, it's a 36% increase, but does that?
Right.
So, yeah. It's not a static country. It's increased 25%, you know, so. I think on a lot of these things, it's helpful, just like when we look at the schools, we know how many students.
Right.
I think on a lot of these things, it's better because, you know, it's easier to average out, what do we pay, in some cases, we could be lower than previous years.
Yeah, right.
And we just have more employees. It's just towns grow and this is what happens.
Yeah, if we've got 25% more people on the plan.
Exactly.
So that it's really only increased 11% over four years, that's.
It just went through COVID, you know, how many people lost employment, had to go on their spouses insurance, you don't know.
It's an uptake rates, I mean, just, I mean, in the last, in the last month and a half, we had an employee wasn't on a health insurance and went to a family plan.
Right.
That's an increase of $25,000 a year.
Yeah.
Basically right off the bat, have a few of those, you're up to a hundred thousand dollars easily.
So I, I think the number, you know, if it's, you know, it's information that we can have.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It'd be great to have on there, you know, because it would help us better analyze it.
Any other questions on?
Yes, so the group life is provided as a base benefit to employees. There is some utilization of the benefit, which we are, seem to be the last few years consistently utilizing between four or $500 of it. So there's a bit baked in, but given that it's a small number and it is a base, it is a base benefit that's provided to employees, and as we said, as the town grows and adds employees, there may come to be more utilization there as well, which could, you know, quickly, when we look at it as a matter of percents, it's, you know, utilizing roughly half, but when you think about how small the dollar amount ultimately is, a couple of employees utilizing it could end up getting closer.
Any questions on that?
Medicare contribution is, is based on our payroll. Payrolls have gone up, which has led to a modest increase in the Medicare contribution as well. We've got an increase of $2,000 for 2.44%, which again, as the payroll has increased, so too have the payroll related expenses.
By the way, as far as that's pretty much of a set.
Yes.
Yeah. OpB.
So one thing, we are level funding with an asterisk, and so the OpB is for our retiree health benefits. I want to draw your attention to the lack of anything here in FY22, which makes it look like an increase of 35,000. The reason for that is that this was not funded through the budget in FY22, this was funded through a raise in appropriate at the special town meeting, thus was not included in the budget. However, it is returning to the budget for FY23, which is kind of de facto level funding for years prior.
For the new members, we had, we asked Mary to leave, leave it off last year's budget and told her we'd revisit it special, and we revisited it special, we were able to put it in at that point, but at this time, we couldn't.
Yeah. And you may be asked to do that again this year, depending upon where we fall with the levy limit.
Yes, we did, I mean, so also at special, we did a raise in appropriate for the 35,000, but we also took 90,000 free cash.
So we put in a total of 125 last year. Well, I'm sure you, she's gone over this with you, this was one of her pet projects, and this is one of the things that Dighton does a lot better than a lot of communities is that we have been funding some money into the OpB every year and hopefully down the road, we're in a much better position than a lot of the other towns. With Taunton's, is it up to 300 million or something like that, that they're underfunded?
Does anyone have the number that we're at right now?
I knew this question was going to come up and I should have.
Okay, all right. You know, I thought I'm curious to know where we are. I know at one time, we didn't do very good with it, and then we really started to get on board.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious, but maybe that could be, you know, provided to us next time.
Taking some notes and I will follow up.
Actually, if you have that information, if you wanted to email it out to us, that would be great.
I'd be happy to.
Any questions on OpB?
No.
So like we do actually have on the Zoom, we have business manager Costa from the Aggie, and he was able to join us.
Okay.
So the committee wanted to hear from him as well.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? How are you? Very well, thank you, thank you. Thanks for having the Aggie a part of this conversation, we appreciate that the finance committee and the select board and the town administrator have been able to reach out to us and have a conversation about where the Aggie school is. I did, if, if the board wouldn't mind, the committee wouldn't mind, if I could spend a few minutes just giving an update. I have a slide deck real quick, just to go through where we are with the Aggie itself that may answer some questions of where we are with the project. Would you mind if I shared my screen?
Yeah, please go ahead.
So we wanted to give us some updates where we are as a school. The first point of it is, we want to thank the town of Dighton, it's been a really great partnership that we've worked together over the last, particularly with the MSBA project, the last two and a half years, from shoveling the ground to where we are today. It's been an amazing project. The town has been very helpful, very resourceful, provided us with a lot of feedback about how we can be nestled not only in the community, but build better relationships for the future, how we can be better stewards of what we use as our resources, and without the help that we receive from the town itself, I think this project would not have gone in the way that it is today. You've heard from a number of different schools, we're very fortunate, we came at a time in the bid process to be able to have a price per square footage at a very lower amount, and for what we receive for an MSBA project of 103 million, we received a transformation of the entire campus. So I wanted to share with you a little bit of some of our updates, for those that have seen it, our campus now is in a position where we're set to be about 450 students, expanding to about 640. Our enrollment projections in the next three to four years will roll about an additional 48 students per year, that's what we're trying to hit as a target mark for our construction. We have enough seat capacity for about 640. As we know, the campus has been in operation for over 100 years, we have nine agricultural science majors, and at this time, back in the act of 2018, we're authorized to construct at 103,750,000, the reimbursement rate with 63.44%. Just to give some highlights of it, the expansion itself, with the 103 million, we were able to design six new and updated buildings on the campus itself, six new buildings and two upgraded. So we built a new science and environment facility, it houses our natural resource management, our animal science program, those that were participating before, you knew that animal science, at points in time, were taking programs and studies in the chicken coop. We're in a much better position now with new lab facilities, wet and dry labs, research areas, and students have developed our environmental engineering program, along with emboldening our animal science program. But we now can house all of our science and environmental engineering in one location. We have a new student commons with an admissions media center and dining hall, we put a small addition to Gilbert Hall and a huge renovation to the complete 1903 building, modernized classrooms and built a climbing lab for the arbor culture building, we built a new landscape and arbor building itself included in that hardscape and a chainsaw lab, we renovated the ag mechanics facility, and we put in a new dairy barn, which is the last building for completion of the campus. Just to give a little bit of a spotlight in some of these areas, the Center for Science itself, it is going to be a LEED gold certified facility, you can tell through some of the graphical designs that we have there, those that put you right into the lab spaces that we have, where students are taking courses now, those are also flip spaces, we're able to, to the rear of the building itself, to the rear of the classrooms, we're able to go directly into bio secure labs, flexibility for us to be able to move in and around classroom space, hood vents that are movable, so research and projects can be done in the middle of classroom spaces, which is really how students are learning now, co-op, in that kind of group mentality. Sustainability is key, this particular building has the ability to collect rain through our vast locations where we have an underground trenching locations to be able to collect for our rainwater storage, we're able to then harvest the rain and use it for our sprinkler systems on that north side of campus. So we tried to package that whole building and location really to be a sustainable facility. Not only that, the building itself has compostable toilets and the conservation of energy and water is tremendous. This will be the building that we're working closely with the town with to put together a solar array package for the rooftop mounts on both this building and a dairy barn. Taking you to the student commons facility, this is a very neat building on campus, this wood was harvested in a complete timber structure from Canada, it was quite an experiment bringing this in during COVID, when we had shoremen strikes and we had difficulty bringing actual staff and laborers to be able to put this up during the COVID process, but they did a great job, you can take a look at the facility itself, it houses our dining hall, open air directly out to a garage, and looks completely down to our admissions office and conference space and our library that's located here. It's become really the hub, buses get dropped off in front of the student commons and the CSC building, science building, and a population of students that participated in the morning, just even talking about breakfast participation, we're from 15 to 20 students to over 100 plus every morning, not to mention the congregation. This is where our prime area, where students, they spend the majority of their time socializing, but also this is where our community engagement happens. We expanded the climbing lab in Gilbert, that's the slide at the bottom here, give you a little bit of a photo snap here, I'm not sure how large it's coming out for you all there, but we have a new climbing lab facility, this was our auditorium, it sat probably about 200 at a time, but we needed to grow, so we repurposed the space to place a brand new climbing lab facility and allows our students in arbor culture to be able to do a safety measure, design coursework prior to hitting the actual trees. All work gets done here, freshmen to see new year, and then gets taken out from the classroom directly into the living classroom that we have, which is our campus. The picture to the right is Gilbert Hall's walk and main pavilion, we call that the heart of the campus, it's our main walk through, the connection. This is a rendering of the location of the building itself, but it gives you a snapshot of the walk and the approach. At some point in time, we'll tie in all of our flower arrangements that are coming directly from Flori and replant this area over the next couple of years, as we look at what this space is going to be imagined to be. This building was, although a renovated facility, it is going to be renovated to achieve LEED The expansion of the dairy barn, of the, excuse me, the landscape arbor building, for those that have been on the campus before, this was the site of the pole barn, the earlier 1940 to 19, excuse me, 60 facility, renovations a couple of times in the pole barn space, it was just an open air, and when you came to our fall shows, this is where we displayed the majority of our hardscape work, landscape and landscape design, work that's been done from our students. We renovated this area and built a brand new landscape arbor building. Building to the left hand side now houses our chainsaw lab, the right hand side is our hardscape facility, students are actually now in an enclosed area, yes, it's heated, it's exciting, they have the opportunity to be in a space now that they can be able to use. This is also a look into what our dairy barn is going to be looking like in the future with a robotic milking and technology system. Cows will actually be retrained from hand milking to robotic milking with RFID chips to start looking at them and identifying their health, bringing them in, washing them, the unit does all of that work, tests and samples milk, and then if the animal is healthy, produces, obviously goes through the milking process, and then if not, is able to kind of put it directly to quarantine and allows us to be able to manage. So students have that hands-on approach, so they've received the opportunity to have the campus itself gone through a complete renovation process, and we're very excited that the last building, meaning dairy barn, should be commissioned and opened within the next couple of weeks. And that, that's really the thrill to us, that the last two and a half years have been our construction, our renovation, we've done it during COVID, it's an amazing opportunity that we've been able to do that, students really didn't miss a beat, they've enjoyed both classroom work in the science facility, but then flipped over to Gilbert Hall for the traditional academic spaces, and they're pretty thrilled, they're thrilled to have this. We talk about this, I'm just going to pause the share for, but we talk about this facilities, we talk about this campus in a way that is obviously nestled between Berkeley and Dighton, knowing that we are as a county school, there's 16 towns, four cities that are kind of our gateway cities within Bristol County, and then we draw an additional 13 right now out of county, out of. And then we draw an additional 13 right now out of county, out of district, communities to us. So when we talk about the impact of the students that we have in this process, for now and for years to come, it's tremendous. The seat capacity allows us to gain that extra space. But not only to that, the economic impact in this region for this new facilities is going to be felt for years to come. And I think the exciting part of all of this is our students are now in a facility that's highly engaged up to where we are to modernization, still focusing on agricultural science. We're in the Commonwealth, there are only two schools that focus directly in that area, ourselves and Northfield. And that purist is amazing for us to be able to do that, blend some of our history, but with our, with our future of where our science is to go. So I thank you for a little bit of that time, just getting us an opportunity to update the town, both on the thin com side and the select board side, the work that we've done. And again, it wouldn't be done without the work that's been completed with many of the folks that are sitting in that room today. I don't see Jim, but I do believe that he's in a position where he's made a significant impact. Thank you.
Yeah, we kept him out tonight, Karen.
Thank you for the time for that. I'll definitely answer questions. I know we want to get into some of the financial piece of it, but I'm not sure if everybody have had an opportunity to really see where we are at as a campus right now.
Hey, one question I have, we certainly like the costs going down on the loans as the year goes, years go on. But on an annual basis, so if you're going to take on 48 additional students a year, how many right now are you turning away?
So right now, we, we have 171 seat capacities now for a freshman class. We've received over 510 applications. So we, yeah, so it's, it's become highly, for a few different reasons, become very highly competitive in the sense of the Department of Ed's new standards for enrollment and the admissions policies put into place. But we're trying to, because of the enrollment growth of 48 each year, we're tempering that slowly so we can make sure that we can be fiscally responsible to bring up our positions of staffing faculty and support staff with due diligence. So we're not doing that all in one year or two. And we're also making sure that we can take on these expenses of these buildings. You all know preventative maintenance needs to occur in these facilities. So we're trying to tailor that up slowly to prepare our own fiscal budget that we're not in a position in four to five years from now to not be affordable. So we're taking a very conservative and progressive approach.
Probably silly question, but your first year, it'll be if the freshman will be the 48 increase and they'll flow through. And it's not sprinkled through the four years. It's really just a freshman class that increases and then you go from there.
Yeah, every, every year, the freshman class will increase, correct? Yep.
Okay.
Yep, you got it.
Just while I'm thinking of it from a school standpoint, I'm assuming your audit is done for the last year? And you guys aren't waiting on anything from, from your auditors or?
Yeah, the county, obviously as a county school, we're audited through the county of Bristol. And so the counties has now completed their audit process and we're receiving back the findings, if any, within the next couple of weeks. Our school department, yeah, our school ended the year report, which is done through the Department of Ed, is being audited at that point in time. But I don't perceive to see if any other issues that are coming.
Any questions? Selectman Wally, while he's here? You have any questions while he's here? Good. In case you couldn't hear that, Selectman Hall said you have a very good relationship with him, with the board.
Likewise, thank you again. Yeah, very helpful. And a positive note, Dighton, the student population in Dighton is, for students attending next year, the Aggie, and I'm sure Mike has mentioned this already with some of the preliminary numbers that we had, you're increasing by four students. So that's great. Students are seeing that impact and we like to see it in the local community. I know a few select board members and others have discussed about that enrollment. We're right here for them and that's, that's the blessing of being in the same town that the students can attend in the school that they're there, so.
Is 16 the highest it's been? No?
No, you've had higher in previous years. You've been in the, you've been in the twenties at times.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Yeah. Feel free if there's any other questions, please shoot me an email and I'll discuss it with Mike directly. Thank you. I wish you the best through your process. And I did want to close by saying thank you for making the adjustment to having the Aggies do the presentation today, not during the educational session next week where we weren't be able to attend. So thank you for being very flexible with that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Take care.
I will warn everyone, I'm good with numbers, names I'm awful. That is all we had on the agenda for tonight, besides minutes. Everyone had a chance to run through all the minutes that were on the agenda?
I haven't. I haven't had a chance to look them all over, but that's okay.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the minutes?
I think the only one was the one from tonight wasn't attached to the email, the one from Tuesday night.
Wasn't attached on the?
On the email you sent.
You didn't have it attached?
Oh, I didn't have it attached. Oh crap. Do you want to hold that one or, because it is three pages?
Yeah, we better hold that one.
Yeah, we should hold that one.
Even sales.
We'll hold the 426. So we'll vote on all the older ones then. I guess we discussed whether the new members would vote or not since they weren't in those. Did you guys read through those?
I did.
I did.
So you're free to vote if you want, or you can abstain. Any other questions on any of the older ones? Motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes submitted through April 20th, April 22nd, April 27th, November 1st, December 22nd of 2021, and March 24th of 2022.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. We'll leave both for you.
Okay. Here you go. Maybe because I didn't look at them. So he's an abstention. So he's the abstention.
What is, Selectman, anything that you want to add to?
Tour and ribbon cutting X ride, isn't that correct? You said a couple of things about Ed's school. Take a look at the TP project that aided at length.
What time is that? 10 o'clock.
Is that open to the public or?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure. I can find out tomorrow though. And I can, I can ask.
So I think, you know, the Selectman Hall, I'd actually like to address what you just stated. You know, granted, the cost was only 103 million, but that was, what, three years ago? When the prices were a lot less, we don't have the supply chain logistics problems that we have today. So when we look at BP, the cost reflects the times that we're in. And I think the other thing that's really important for us to note is the yes vote costs us 100, whatever, 80 million dollar plus price tag. But a no vote was still going to cost us 137 million in change as well. So for, for the additional 40, we'll call, I'm just going to use round numbers, 45 million dollars. Not only do the Dighton students who go to school there get a brand new campus, but every student who is going there is going to get a brand new campus. So yes, it is a burden on a lot of our townspeople. But from an annual perspective, the, the impact between the 137 million and the 180-plus million on an annual basis to each is relatively minor in the grand scheme of things. But my bigger, my bigger point here is three years ago, costs were significantly cheaper. I mean, look at, look at our personal property assessments here in town. Just, just three years ago, for example, I think my house was on, on, you know, the, the online websites like Zillow was 350, 320, 340, 350,000. And now it's approaching that $500,000. That's, that to me is astronomical with the increases. So 103 versus 186 or 183, whatever BP is costing, a reflection of the time.
Bear with me one second. We know, is DR planning on coming next week?
Yes.
They are?
Yes. Yes, and as I mentioned the other night too, we do have an updated our DP assessment as well. And to be honest, we haven't had time to put it in the budget yet either. But that will definitely help where we are with the Ex-Sloppy Task as well. Yeah, so they will be there. One thing I also wanted to mention that we're going to try to pull together now that we're about halfway through with the review process. Obviously, we have the other half of the town operating budget to consider as well. But we do have the, the proposed warrant articles that are also part of viewing. So what we were thinking, I have executive assistant in myself, is that at the end, is at the end of the meeting on, at the end of the meeting on Tuesday, we would provide the, I mean, provide the ability to the agenda, we've already updated the agenda formally, to have the initial look at, at the list of warrant articles. So if we could at least bring, bring forward what has been proposed. So, so anticipating that when the thin com starts to review them on, on Thursday, you wouldn't be hearing and thinking about them for the first time then. So if we did that, add that to the agenda, like we will, just like we did last year, add that spreadsheet into the Google Drive as well, public Monday. I'd say, like, so like everybody has the ability to get up to speed on that part of the process as well, if that makes sense.
Do we want to hold the departments to be able to speak on their article? Do we want to hold that until towards the end as opposed to having that on Tuesday?
So yeah, what I was thinking, I mean, again, like it's not my call, but just really, I mean, I could provide now that obviously the departments would want to speak on their, on their articles, but just so we.
Get our eyes on them, see, kind of digest it a little bit and see what kind of questions we might have.
Okay.
Yeah, then we can have them here.
Okay.
So I mean, that's what I, that's what I was thinking, but again, I don't have all the answers. I just wanted to, I'll share my thinking on that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, unless anyone objects, so that makes sense to me.
No, that makes sense to me.
So DR's coming, Conservation, are they coming? I saw the email where they didn't want to come.
To be honest with you, I didn't see that email, so I will follow up on that.
Okay. Unless anyone else has anything, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?